The next evening meeting for a public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget is scheduled for Tuesday, July 11th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, July 21st, 2017, at 9:00 AM at the Island View Restaurant, 3546 8 Tea Time Circle. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. And I'd like to try to explain to everybody that our screen up here, we had some lightning damage a couple of weeks ago, and it was working last night, but it's not now. But they are going to get it fixed.
Yes.
They're working on that. I need a motion for the action agenda. Do you accept it?
Motion approved.
Ten seconds.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgel?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, we're all here for the code enforcement workshop. Tanya, you want to take it over?
Yes. Back in February, County Attorney Ross Macbeth presented to you revisions to the code enforcement. Back in, just to give you a little background, back in October of 2015, the district retained Attorney Bob Pritt out of Naples to assist with revisions. And the issues that were presented then, well, number one was mulch being used as a prepared surface for parking. Okay, that was a, that was part of the topics. Some of the other changes that were recommended by Bob Pritt, we had parking as another one. And let me get to my page here. Sorry about that. Vehicle parking, fines, and civil citations. So we discussed numerous things. And once Mr. Pritt finished with his revisions, we submitted those revisions to the county attorney Ross Macbeth. So today, we're here to talk about any other questions or comments that you have on those changes or any additions.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I just wanted to follow up on the conversation that we had in reference to on Page Two, and it depends which document you're looking at. But on Page Two, we addressed the golf carts and the motor vehicles is designated at 20 miles per hour. And I know we, this is what we discussed, you want to check into it, because I know there was discussion that there's a number of these golf carts that certainly go over that 20 mile an hour limit. So are we going to change this? Are we going to leave it? How are we going to address it?
Well, the statute, there's two statutes that are pertinent. It's 316.212 and 316.2122. And those talk about, those are the state of Florida definitions for golf carts and low, low-speed vehicles. And basically what it is, based on my review of the statutes, is that if it goes over a certain speed, you have to have additional, you have to have additional equipment on the vehicle.
I thought that we would focus exclusively about the problems we're having with code enforcement. I didn't know we're going to be here to discuss golf.
We're here to-
Golf carts is part of the code enforcement, Mr. Jackson.
For code enforcement.
Well, you can't enforce them still. How are you going to enforce them? You need to- Mr. Jackson, there's public comment coming up, okay?
Point of order, though.
Well, there isn't. We just answered his point of order.
Right, it's a rule of point of order.
Yeah, but we just answered it. Go ahead.
So low-speed vehicles under 316.2122 require headlamps, stop lamps, turn signals, taillamps, parking brakes, you know, some additional equipment. And so that's, I think the reason that Mr. Macbeth has included this this way is because that's what matches the statute. So we kind of want to put people on notice. Well, you may have a golf cart, you may think it's a golf cart, but if it goes over that 20 miles an hour, it's actually a low-speed vehicle. And if you're, and golf carts are only allowed to be operated between sunrise and, I mean, sundown and sunrise and sunset. If you can't be, you can't drive around a golf cart at night because golf carts don't require headlamps. And so if it goes over this speed, you have to have this equipment. Otherwise, technically, you could be cited by the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so if you have, what you're saying is the directional, brake lights, headlights, things of that nature, you can drive after dark?
Correct, because you're considered a low-speed vehicle in that statute. The low-speed vehicle statute applies to you.
So we're recommending-
And if it goes over 25 miles an hour, is somebody potentially in trouble? Because I think it says 25 miles an hour here. So I'm, I just want to make sure that if we incorporate something, that we can actually potential, or enforce it.
And I think that's one of the reasons that Mr. Macbeth has included this, is just to kind of put people on notice. We wouldn't want to call something a golf cart under our statute that doesn't fit the definition of golf, golf cart under the state statute. And so we're trying to match them so that people are on notice that this is, this is how the state views it. So this is what you need to be operating under.
We're recommending to keep the definitions of the golf cart and the low-speed vehicle inside the minimum maintenance standards as a definition. So that's what we've done here, is we've add, Ross has added it as a definition based on statute. So we're recommending to keep it in.
We're not going to be enforcing speed limits, but we just want people to, you know, to know if you're, if they're reviewing that, we wouldn't want to suggest that, you know, because these are, are going to be our code enforcement standards, that we, you know, are requiring something less than, than what the state, how the state uses. Because if you're out, if you're out operating, you don't have that equipment, or you're, you know, you can be cited. Very simple. Not that we would be doing the citing, but the Sheriff's Department could do the citation.
Okay. The second question, which has been a sticky subject for Highlands County, is the trashcan containers. And we had a brief discussion on that, Tanya and I, and I'm not sure. The cards went out, I thought it was well done, people were informed about what the statute is. And we do address in parts here that trash containers have to be pretty much out of sight. But yet, I don't see it written in here. So how do we enforce that? How does, how does Mike's organization enforce that?
The very top paragraph under garbage disposal, the last two sentences, it says, "Because garbage attracts vermin and other disease-carrying animals, no person shall place any garbage container other than multi-user dumpsters in open public view for pickup earlier than 12 hours prior to the designated pickup time. Garbage containers shall otherwise be kept in a secure and sanitary manner away from public view."
So Bob's going to be responsible for going around and making sure that people don't have those containers in view. Bob Brumfield, or Mike?
Yes. Because this is a new plan-
Mike.
Because it's a new plan, it's going to take us a while to get there. We have 3,000 homes. A lot of people don't have, have little fences to hide them from the road. So we sent the cards out, and we, I think we received about 80 phone calls in the last week because of this. People asking what to do, how to do it. We have to give them time to do it, to build their small fences or where they're going to put them. And, and I think we're going to start at sometime, sometime in August to start citing everybody. So, so if you haven't done what you're supposed to be doing, we will go to the house, knock on the door, explain one more time to them what we have to do, but then we'll start citing them after that.
Okay, so that's, you're only giving them until August for a great period?
Well, we've already given them-
We've already given three months.
We've given them three months already. And it's right in the bylaws in Sun and Lake. I mean, you know. Now, we've also, in the past, have cited people over the last four or five years for leaving their, their trash containers out. So it's really nothing new, it's just to explain to them, these are the rules.
So you're going to go to those homes and-
We're going to have to. It's going to be a lot, a lot of work, you know?
Now, who will be doing that? Is Bob?
It'll be Bob and Philip.
And Philip?
Yeah. Probably myself.
Well, they're issued a warning first.
You can deputize somebody.
Right.
They're not cited, they're issued a warning first.
Right.
Okay, not that we're-
And that's the first time going to the house, you know, you know.
Yeah, I think-
They are our neighbors, they are our neighbors, and we don't want to be, you know, going there like, you know, like the Marines or whatever, you know? We want to do it right.
And I know they've had two or three months to kind of mull us over, they've kind of ignored it, shame on them. But I also believe that we need to give them a little bit of time to accommodate them. You know, so I think the first step-
I mean, if you tell me that we should wait till September?
I guess the first step is-
I don't know. I mean-
Is to put a stake in the ground and say, okay, we, we need to get to all of these people that we see in violation. Give them an opportunity, though, and whatever you decide, that timeline is, you're going to give them a month, then so be it. But I think you should give them some, some reasonable time, because they've basically ignored it thus far and-
Some have, some have.
Mike, didn't you say you were going to go to Lowe's and get a kind of a kit together?
We already, as a matter of fact, yes, yes, Mike, we did that yesterday, and we have the figures all together. The problem is, is a lot of residents can't do it themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they have to hire somebody to come in and do it, you know? I mean, obviously, the district's not going to be doing that, you know? You know, we have enough work to do now, so, you know, we won't be going to do that. But we did go to Lowe's and went to Home Depot and got prices on, on the height and what it would cost to do, do it themselves.
Okay.
So whoever causes, we're letting them know that.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
My final question then would be as pertains to code enforcement. I listened to Mr. Pritt, I wasn't part of the board at the time, I listened to him early on, and then, of course, Macbeth came in, he made his little adjustments to it. And at that time, I commented and said, these are all very important codes, but there's no sense in having a code unless we can enforce it. And that's where it puts a little bit of hardship on, on Mike's organization. We can put all of these out there we want, but we, we need to enforce them, you know? Something needs to happen. Just to have them written down doesn't really help. So if he needs extra help, I've asked him in the past, he's kind of indicated that he doesn't need extra help, but maybe that's something we should be thinking about in this budget coming up to assist the, the group there, so.
Well, and the, as far as Highlands County goes, Highlands County code enforcement is entirely complaint-driven. You know, it's, if nobody's complaining, you know, they're, they're not out there, they're not out driving around looking for code violations. And I don't think that's something that we need to be actively doing either, because it makes it very easy for selective enforcement to be claimed. If we're constantly driving down four different streets and citing everybody on that street, and not citing anybody else in different areas of the, of the district, that, that leads to claims of selective enforcement. So, you know, a big part of code enforcement is, you know, for people that are being aggrieved, if they see a code violation, they should report it. You know, and like I say, what, I think one of the biggest things that we're trying to do with, with these modifications is to draw a line as to what it is that we enforce, and what it is that the county, you know, is to the, for the county to enforce.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt? Can you read it?
Yeah, I got a couple things. The timeline from when somebody gets cited and to when we actually can take them to court or have a special magistrate, that seems to be an awful long time. It's like 30 days or something like that, isn't it? By the time you give them a chance to fix it, appeal and all this stuff. Can we, as a district, shorten that period? Or is that a state rule, or?
For the ones that we enforce, I don't, there's no reason we can't shorten it.
Well, that would be one suggestion I would have, instead of it taking, well, maybe Bob's got a better answer, but.
What we, our process is, we send out a warning notice, that's the first step. And then if they don't comply, that, we have to give what they call a reasonable amount of time to comply. And if they don't comply on the warning notice in that period of time, which for grass is seven days, business days, not weekends and holidays aren't included in that seven-day period, then we send a notice of violation. And that, we also give them a deadline. A lot of times, it depends on how often we have the code hearings. We have code hearings just about every month. So we, you know, if we can't get it from, to the, to the nearest code hearing, we have to wait till the following. So, but I can tell you, the county for high grass and weeds gives 30 days to comply. They're not nearly as fast as we are. They have code enforcement hearings once a month, I do believe, on the third Thursday of the month, I think. So if, if the county was to come in, and they have in the past, before we were able to lean properties, have enforced high grass and weeds and other, other violations that we, we can now take care of here in the district, it's taken them a lot longer than it's taken us to get them in compliance. Sometimes, what, well, we have a situation on Monza right now, where the grass is, wasn't that tall until we got these rains the last week or so, and now it's, it's knee-high. So that, I've already started working on that property, and it will go to the, to the next hearing, not the one that I have next week, but the following. And, but still, that's several weeks away. So that's, that's part of the problem, that things appear to take a long time. I can tell you that 95 or so percent, maybe 99% of the cases that we address are taken care of before it gets to the hearing. So we don't have a lot of cases that go to the hearing, but we, when they go to the hearing, they're considered a repeat violator, then we don't have to give them a, a time to comply. We can just take them to the, to the closest hearing.
Well, I would suggest that we shorten that time period. You know, if it takes 30, your explanation takes 30 days, so shorten it up to two weeks. Give them three days' notice, and then cite them, and then, I mean, just shorten it up so things don't get out of hand, just like you just mentioned, that it takes maybe six weeks or eight weeks to fix something, and that's, to me, is ridiculous.
Well, from the-
And I'm not criticizing you for it, I'm just saying that's the process, and can we change the process? That's all I'm asking.
Well-
Well, he already said we could.
We have, by law, you have to give, if you're going to take somebody to a hearing, you have to give them 10 days prior notice to a hearing. Business days. So that's two weeks that they have to be notified prior to a hearing. There's no way to get it faster than that. That's, that's the law, that's the state statute 162, says that.
All right, so we can't fix that?
Can't get it faster than two weeks, no.
All right. Well, based on that, then, on Page Three, Five, under the second paragraph from the bottom, underbrush growth, it used to be, and a couple of years ago, it was like 18 inches, I think, and we reduced it to 12. So if it takes so long to fix something, why don't we reduce the 12 inches down further? So you can start acting quicker, like at six inches or eight inches or something? Is it?
No, that's, that would be fine with, with us.
I mean, any, any grass that's more than six inches high, it's going to take a commercial mower to come in here and mow it anyway.
That's very correct, very true. The only problem that would be with a vacant lot, you know, we, if we have, we have many, many cleared vacant lots throughout the district, a lot of them get weeds and everything that grow, you know, they can grow up five, six inches in three, four days. So that would be, you know, we couldn't really keep addressing them time after time after time, because then they would cry harassment or-
Maybe after the third time, they'd get the hint. They're going to keep it mowed.
You know, it's, it's amazing how many people are complying quickly after they get fined.
Well, you shouldn't have to find them, that's my whole point is-
And I agree, we're not-
It's a learning process.
What we're, what we want is voluntary compliance. That's the whole key to it, but that's not always the case.
Well, I would rather hear reasons to do something than reasons why we can't do something, that's it.
I agree with you.
So anyway, so I'm, I'm suggesting we reduce that, that's my suggestion.
I would say maybe go to eight inches.
Okay, that's better than 12.
And there are a lot of communities that have that, that, but they're more of a deed restriction than an ordinance. But there, there are places that do have eight-inch height that it's got to be cut by.
Well, I'm suggesting we think about that. On Page Six, Number Four, it says, "Storage and parking of recreational vehicles, travel trailers, and camping trailers." But when you read on, from that point on, it never mentions travel trailers or camping trailers again. So my question is, does that first statement mean that travel trailers and camping trailers are inclusive of recreational vehicles, or what?
The way that I, I look at that is that any kind of a recreational vehicle, travel trailers, campers, RVs, are all in that category. Boats, utility trailers, all of them that are listed there, we, we address them the same way.
Okay, the problem I have with that, the way it's written, is a person could have a travel trailer in his front yard, he could have a boat in his front yard, and he could have a utility trailer in his front yard, all at the same day.
That's, that's, yeah.
Okay. So to me, that's just trash overload, as far as I'm concerned.
That is true, but they're not allowed to keep them there for an extended period of time.
It doesn't matter, it's just, it's just another situation where you got a code thing, and you got to go through the whole process. So I'm suggesting that we look at changing that. First of all, I have a neighbor that has a 17-foot boat, and I would not appreciate it if that boat was parked in his driveway every time he could get a chance to do that. Fortunately, he puts it in his garage, so that's fine. And I think most fishing boats around here are 16, 17, 18 feet long, I don't know how, but that's my guess. So to control that, I would suggest that we reduce the size of the boat from 18 feet down to 12 feet, which would eliminate a lot of boats out here being illegally parked. And the other part I would like to change in that is, it says, "You can have a boat and a utility trailer at the same time." So I'd like to change the word from "and" to "or." So you can have one or the other. I have two. And thirdly, I would like to change the size of the utility trailer from six feet to four feet.
Right now, it's eight. The utility trailer's eight feet.
No, the height, height.
Oh, a height, okay.
Which, to me, would eliminate some of these commercial mowers. These guys got these big trailers that they haul their mowers around. So if you reduce the size of the, the trailer, it would inhibit them, and I think it would force people to start looking at storing their products someplace that's designed to store products like that.
Well, one problem that I have with the boat and the trailer ordinance is, they can be a trashy-looking boat, like we have on Granada, or a trashy-looking trailer that are, that comply with our ordinance because they're within the size limit, but they still, you know, they, they detract from the, you know, the aesthetics of the, of the community.
So I'm saying change the size, so the boat goes away.
Well, if that's what the board would like to do, that's fine with me.
Let me see if I got one more in here, I think. Oh, when you issue a citation, does that go to the homeowner, or does it go to the renter? If it's a rental property, I should have said that.
If it's a citation that we issue, it's put on the property.
Okay.
It's, it's-
So it's up to the owner of the property to enforce the renters to react or whatever?
That's correct. We don't really, you know, we, it can be done where it's put against the renter, but there's no way to collect it, no way to enforce it.
Well, I'd prefer it go against the homeowner.
Yeah, that's the way that we do it.
Okay. My, my final comment is, it's, you know, we have a lot of things going on here, you know, like for assessments, people really don't know what the assessment dollars are used for. I mean, if you walk down the street and ask 10 people, you'd probably get eight people to say, "I don't know, I'm not sure, I guess, maybe this, or maybe that," or whatever. And I noticed that the district puts out a little card here called Assessments, and on the back, it tells you everything that your dollars are paying for. And one of them on there is mosquito control, which I think nobody would ever answer my question with mosquito control. So my point is, I would like to increase our security by 2,000 people. In other words, why don't we produce a card like this for code enforcement? So code enforcement, and on the back, you list all the major stuff, boat size, mulched areas, you know, all the stuff that are under codes. And send this out to everybody, so everybody kind of knows what the codes are around here. And you talk about enforcement by complaint, this would create a whole community being fully aware of what our codes are, and start complaining about their neighbor, the guy down the street, or whatever, so. That's a suggestion I have, that we think about doing that, so. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you, Kurt. Wally?
Yeah, I was, in the last meeting, we talked about this, I brought up about the ex parte communication, to make sure that everybody was covered in there, that should be covered by that regulation, that it's been added, because we didn't, at that time, we didn't have the violators, or the attorneys, or anybody to play outside the rules. But now, they're in there, so that was the only thing that, when I went through here, that I, except what Mark covered, that I wanted to cover, but it's in there now.
Larry?
On Page Six, under Parking Item One, "No person shall park any vehicle either behind a structure or side of a structure, behind the front building line, except on a temporary With that, I'm not exactly sure what you call a temporary basis. My, my definition of a temporary basis, and maybe the law's definition, is two different things. But we do have a lot of houses in here that have a side garage. Do we need to make some kind of an exception for this, or let the, let the committee make the judgment on it?
I would interpret that as meaning, you know, parking on the side or, or the back would be on a not-prepared surface. I think that you're allowed to park your vehicle on any prepared surface.
That's not how it reads, though.
Yeah, I, I agree, that sentence itself does not read like that. I, we can just add on the, put, bring that into it, put the prepared surface in that sentence, so that it says, that'll make it more clear, I think.
Now, it does say a temporary basis, which most vehicles would be parked on a temporary basis. However, if you put a boat alongside the house and left it for a month, is that temporary? It's not to me, but-
Although, that's under the, that's under the motor vehicle section, I don't think the boats would be covered under motor vehicles, but it is-
Ooh, you got one sitting up there.
You know, there's a house in your neighborhood, Dave, that's right on the corner there, that they've got a big motor home and a metal shed kind of thing, and that's behind the front of the front line of the house. Would that be in violation?
I don't, that's, I remember when he was building that structure, because it's in some sort of enclosed struc, I mean, not enclosed, but is it a covered structure? But it's definitely not enclosed, it's visible, you know, completely visible. It's on a prepared surface, you know?
But it talks about storage behind the front line of the house, and it would definitely, and it's definitely behind the front line of the house.
I can answer that.
Okay.
That property has, it's a corner lot.
Right.
So the front line is defined on both sides. It's not, you know, it's, it's probably equal with the front line on the side that it's on. So it, it's an exempt, kind of an exemption on that, in that particular place.
Okay. Wasn't picking on them, I was just trying to use that as an example.
Yeah, and that's a good example, too.
That's all I got, Mike, for, for the minute.
I got a couple of just questions, Tanya. When you talked about the mulch, could you explain to everybody what, what we are proposing to do with cars parking with the mulch, or anything else like that?
Yes, cars currently cannot be parked on the grass. So our, our, our code mentions that if you put down some mulch and have a prepared surface, then you can park your car in the grass. What we're proposing is removing that and using a different, you have to use a different type of surface. It has to be shell rock, give me some other ideas. Asphalt, well, it could be asphalt.
Concrete.
Concrete. Concrete. Those are going to be the allowed surfaces to park. We do know that there are many, you know, homes here in the district that have multiple vehicles, three, four, or five vehicles that park, and if it's a single-car garage, single driveway, you can only usually fit two. So we understand that, but mulch has been a hot topic here for a long time, and we can take that out as a recommendation.
Thank you. Because I know there's always a question, and I'm sure we all get a lot of questions about that, so...
Well, isn't that addressed?
Yeah, it's in there.
On page three, it says, "And mulch."
Yeah, but I just wanted everybody in the audience to hear that.
Okay, because it says it's not appropriate, so I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Okay, anything else, Tanya, before we go to public comment?
Yes, on the parking motor vehicles, what Larry just mentioned, we need to come up with a little bit different wording here. So we're gonna, David and I are going to work on that, because there are many properties that have structures behind the front line of the house. We understand that, so...
Yeah, what I'm doing is I'm making, I'm writing all these revisions down, and then when we'll, at the next actual board meeting, we'll have something prepared for you to vote on, and we probably will do, go a couple, because I'd rather than try and vote on every single proposed change at one time, just kind of go down the line, I think.
Okay.
If that works.
And that won't, now, do these things have to go back then, after we pass it to the attorney?
Has to go back to the county attorney.
Board of County Commissioners.
Yes.
Is it, is it more practical for us? Just a question, to pass it and then pick out those, these two or three items? Because certainly, we had a lot of good comments, just from our...
Well, and say, because basically what we're, what we're vote, what's going to end up being voted on is what we're going to send to the county and ask them to pass.
Okay.
And so that's what we need to do, is we want it, we want it to be in its final form when we vote on it, so it can go to the county, and we say, "This is what we want you to pass."
Okay, thank you.
Is there any comments about what Kurt is recommending? Because what we were going to do is bring these recommendations back to you, is that correct, in form of a resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think what Mark...
Is there any comments?
No, what Mark had and what Kurt had are great.
Okay.
Larry?
Can we, can we just follow up on something here? Structures behind a property, okay? And I'm quickly looking through here, because I know I read about it, I'm just trying to find it here. What do you define it as a structure?
I'd have to look and see if there's a definition for it.
The key is, does a shed, is a shed considered a structure?
Structures are defined on page three.
This is talking maintenance standards.
Now, it's halfway down.
Structure means a combination of any materials, whether fixed or portable, forming a construction, including buildings.
So that means a shed?
That means a shed.
Means a shed.
It means pretty much anything.
It's just a definition, but it could be anything.
And it, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comment?
Tom Coste, Manor Hill. We've been talking about code enforcement in this project, in this cleanup of the district code enforcement, for a couple of years now, at least. I think it's closer to three, because I believe it was, discussions took place for at least a year before Prit was hired, the Florida guru, to come in here and help us go through our code enforcement. It sounded to me like, I don't know if anybody in this room has read what we started with, it might take a half hour to read the code as it is now recorded at the county for Sunilake. I'm amazed that we can't come up with a definition, a decent definition. Would somebody tell me, what's the definition of the front yard? Two years ago, in Manor Hill, we had a homeowner come in there by the, by the, by the property. He read the code, he hired an engineer to come in and tell him, "What's the percentage of the front yard that I can cover with concrete?" He paid Jermaine Surveying to come in and survey his front yard and come up with a answer. When the crap hit the fan, the district hired Paulson to send Gator, who's now the county engineer, in to measure the front yard. Gator came up with two or three definitions, calculations of the area of the front yard, because there was a question of whether or not, what's the definition of street line? Is that the line of the right-of-way? Is that the line of the pavement? Is that included in the front yard? District office came up and said, "Okay, well, now we gotta, not to recognize the front yard, we gotta come up with a definition for the front line of the house." For a time, for a week or two, the front line of the house was defined as anything forward of the front door. In my case, I got a garage that's got a concrete floor, and it extends twenty-two feet forward of the front door of my house. So now, is that part of the front yard? It's a mess. And here we are, three years after this issue came up about going through our code enforcement, we've had our current attorney, we've got our former attorney, we've got the county attorney, and we got the Florida guru from Naples, who came in here, hopefully read everything that's recorded in our ordinance, and they don't have a definition of this stuff yet? We're wondering what it means, we're going to have to do some research? This is amazing. It's amazing to me. There's probably two dozen homeowner associations in Sunilake. When this started, the homeowner associations were going to be drawn into this discussion. There was not one contact. Nobody from district contacted Manor Hill Owners Association to come in and sit down on this. We face this stuff, the homeowner association, I'm no longer on the board, but I was when this started. We face this all the time. This definition, what's the definition of a prepared surface? For one thing, it's something that does not connect with a district, street, or right-of-way. Does a driveway connect with a street or right-of-way? Yes, it does. But what's the legal, the words mean, to me, words mean things. If it says, "The prepared surface is a surface that does not connect with a district, right-of-way." Can somebody explain to me what a driveway would be if it did not connect with a district right-of-way? That's in the wording of our code now. I think this, I think the money that, and the time that we spent looking at this code issue is wasted, because all these questions still, they're still there. Sunilake has been going for forty-some years now, but we're treating it like nobody ever looked at any of this stuff until we got here. And we don't even have time to read what's already recorded in the book. Thank you. I think it's pathetic.
Will Jackson, resident of Sunilake. When I saw this meeting was going to be held, I was very excited by it. I can drive down my street and go to the end, and I can find fifteen, twenty violations. They're there all the time. Do our code enforcement do anything about it? No. First thing I heard from our attorney, which I don't think is his business, is that we should have the neighbors complain. "Well, you talked about that little card. Well, on that card, thou shalt not kill thy neighbor." You didn't need to add that to that card, because you have someone who has some interest in all this, and they start complaining about every neighbor on the street, someone's going to be at his door one day and beat the hell out of him. This whole thing, what I've heard so far, is a waste. We're talking about making changes on codes we don't enforce now. The problem we have is very simple. There's garbage and rubbish and all this stuff lying around. These cans set out everywhere. When I heard about that can, I had a little elf put on my side of my house, so I could put my can behind that. I can drive down the street and come out, ten or twelve things that are rubbish at the side of the house. What do I mean by rubbish? I don't mean garbage and cans, but all sorts of crap at the side of the house. No one enforces that. No one enforces anything, because the comment that was made, well, you gotta have the neighbor bring it to your attention. If you want war in here, have the neighbor bring it to your attention. We pay people here, and here's what I think they should do. They should drive around. They should spend four days a week on the road. They drive down the street, if they see something that's wrong, they stop their little magic vehicle, they'll just take the address and send them a written memo. They stop their vehicle, they got their little pad or a double form, they say, "Walk up to the door." "I'm code enforcement. You know you're violating the code enforcement here, this is what you're violating." See what they gotta say. If they don't say anything, you write down, because it's a two-part form, you write down, "They're in violation of this code, dah 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 dah," and give them a copy. And you write down at the bottom, "In seven days, I'm going to be back." To see if you corrected this. No go to this judge, or whatever it is. And that's the way you handle code enforcement. And these people in there, oh, we've got so many people in here. I used to run a website. And over a three-week period, I visited every street in here, looking for things about the, looking for things about the district, people working, working on the streets. It didn't take one person. We not only worked a couple hours a day, but I visited almost every street in here. We got two people here who can't visit the streets in here. They don't have to creep along, they can drive along and see these bad things are happening. Nothing is done about it. And I remember an old saying, from, I come from the south, there's an old saying, "That dog don't hunt." I think that's what you got in here, dogs who won't hunt. You don't hunt fox with pick and ease. You gotta be the kind of person who will get out of your car in a very polite manner, and saying, "You're violating the codes here. You need to get this corrected. Here's a ticket I'm giving you."
Mr. Jackson, that's three minutes.
Well, thank you very much, because you guys haven't said anything the whole time you've been here. All the garbage. And you're not addressing the issue at all. And if that's what you want to do, that's fine.
Wow. Anybody else?
Morning. Interesting comments. One of the questions I have, oh, Larry Bertello, is when you find a problem, you tell the person that there's the problem, it takes them a while to correct the problem, and then six months, and it's solved, six months later, the same problem exists, and you go through it again, and ten years later, you go through the same thing. There's a piece of property by me that for ten years I've complained about, and it starts all over again? You know, where is code, where is code enforcement? You know? I'll be honest with you, we haven't had code enforcement here since Jerry Cheok left, how many, twelve years ago? You gotta get out, if we, if we got all the rules, but if you don't, it's only as good as the people that enforce it, or do you enforce the thing or just let it go? I can drive here, when I drove here, I went past three pieces of property that have completely been leveled. One of the properties even had the sand put in to start building a house. That now is decided, or worse, in all these properties. Does anyone ever see this? You know, there's a, there's a property on Crimona that I've complained about for years. If you drive by it, to now, you'll find all this junk and everything sitting out there. It's been that way for years, and I've brought it up. We can't do anything about it. So what are we really going to do? Am I getting answers? We just sit.
This is public comment, Larry.
Oh, okay. So we don't have comment from the board, then? Or anybody else?
You do, you have a comment.
We comment, and then according to what we write, then I'll be receiving a letter explaining my comments, what you're going to do. And that's, unless you've taken out of the meeting, that's what should be done, and that has not been done. The answer is not just sitting idle. The answer is to refer it in writing back to the people that made the comment. Thank you.
Tom Coste, again, I realize I've had my turn, and if you want me to sit down, I will, but I had a couple of more questions before I kind of got carried away. I'll try to keep myself under control. Can I have another minute?
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions. As some of you know, I worked security for a couple of years here, and even today, our security is blogging approximately 6,000 miles a month of security officers driving throughout the district. When I was on security, I suggested to the general manager that since we have really nothing to do, all we're doing is showing the name on the vehicle to people as we drive by at fifteen or twenty miles an hour. By the way, that 6,000 miles covers about, between ninety and a hundred miles of road here in the district. And that means that every road is covered at least twice a day, or on an average, twice a day, if we're averaging 6,000 miles a month. And with a security officer in there with a camera, the car used to have a camera, I assume it still does, and somebody in there with nothing to do but to try to stay awake, you see all these things. For instance, and questions come up, people flag you down and ask you, "When are you going to do something about that yard across the street? You better do something about it." They don't want to complain about their neighbor, but they want, they expect that they're going to get in something for the taxes that they're paying here. And they realize that there's a district employee that sees this stuff, and sees it every day, and yet, nothing's done. My question is, the way this, the way the ordinance is written now, it's the security officer or his agent that can note this stuff. My question is, I'm sorry, code enforcement officer or his agent, or his assigns, I can't remember the exact word, but are security officers empowered or able to make a note on a notepad while they're driving by, and they see a driveway with three cars stacked up in the driveway, and the only way you can make them fit is to park them there sideways, which they do? You'll see that if you drive around it at night. I mean, there's a lot of this stuff. Is security able to make these notes and refer them to the code enforcement officer? Or is it only the code enforcement officer that can go out and recognize these issues? Yeah?
You work security. When you saw things, what did you write on your report?
I wrote what I saw, and I turned it in, I turned it in, and I saw it again, and again, and again, and I...
And they continue to do that, okay? We have cited, in one year, we have eight, eight hundred, eight hundred to nine hundred citations a year, okay? There was a couple of things brought up by Larry. Twenty-five times, we have contacted his, the area where he's talking, okay? The, right, they have, we send them a letter, they have their, their, a couple of weeks to fix it, they fix it, and then they'll continue, they keep continuing. We can't, we can't change the laws. And Tom, you know that, you know that more than anybody, okay? We're getting up here, we're getting beat up for things doing. This board is trying to correct it, right? And the only thing I hear is negative law, you know, and it's small areas, you know? We're out there three shifts a night, okay? We average, all right, they're out there every day. We can't change the laws, okay? You can't go up and bang on somebody's door, door, and tell them that, "To pick up your yard." Because I, I mean, you can't do it to me, and you can't, right? I mean, you guys are getting way, way out of line with this. We want to improve it. That's what we want to do. We want to try to improve this now, okay? All right? And you're coming with small incidents where, where have been addressed many, many times, you know, and I think it's really unfair to put everybody on the line for this. to put everybody on the line for this.
Okay. Could you explain to me the definition of the front yard? Or how about David? No, I want to know the definition of a front yard.
I want to read it to you. I'll read it to you.
It's on page two.
Front yard means a front- front yard is a space in a lot, is sitting the full width of the lot, and situated between the street line and the front line and the main structure.
Okay, there's a couple of resi- there's some definitions right there. The street line, the front line of the house. I don't find those redefined anywhere. The reason I bring this up, we had somebody buy a quarter of a million-dollar home, and within less than a year of his living there, he left because of this issue. And to me, that's an important issue, that I don't think we've- I don't think we've come up with a definition of it yet. So, my- I guess my question is, can security- is security reporting to code enforcement when they see a violation? And the answer is yes.
Answer is yes.
Because the answer I got from Michael Wright was, "You guys don't want to get involved in that," when I suggested it to him.
Can I just say something about that? You know better than that. Did you know that we not involved, okay? All right, Michael Wright, come on. But we, you and I and everybody else, not involved.
Right. But I heard today that we just learned about 3808 miles of the last week, and the grass only got that high since the rain last week. And that grass has been over the limit for the last month.
Tom?
Thank you.
Supervisors, we work as a team. If our security sees something, they do report it.
We know that.
We understand.
Any other public comment? Okay, back to the board.
The only comment I'd like to make is I agree with the timeframe is way too long. And I've complained about it years ago. I've- Bob and I have had nose-to-nose discussions about it in years past, and he's basically saying, "By the standards set by the state of Florida, he can't do anything about it. He can just go through the process. He goes through the process." So, I'm assuming what he's saying is true, and if that's the case, that's the case. We just got to deal with it, so.
Larry?
I don't have any more.
Mark?
No, I'm not saying.
Molly?
No.
All right. I guess that's all we need to talk about.
What we'll do is I'll go through with the suggestions that were made today, and we'll make a final revisalment to bring to you for a vote. And then what we'll do is each change that I make from this document, we'll vote on, and if we give the A or N, whether we're not, make that suggested change or not make it, and then we'll have the final documents taken to the county.
Good.
Okay.
Discussion due and from the board. Mark?
Actually, can I ask David a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
It actually goes back to, the question is being prompted by something that was discussed at the last meeting. And I just want to make sure I understand Robert's rules, so, as it pertains to voting for the board. And my understanding is that a quorum was three people. Yes?
Well, there's a-
Okay. If there's three people here and they vote, three will constitute a quorum.
Correct.
Okay. Four, we could have essentially a deadlock if the vote went 2-2.
Correct.
And that could then be brought back to the board by the party that said, let's say you have two yeses and two nos. The nos can then ask to bring that back to the board.
Correct.
And they can also ask to bring it back with an amendment?
Well, if you- if they can ask to revisit the issue that was- that was- that did not pass. Because anything that doesn't have a majority vote does not pass. And so, if something does not pass, one of the people that voted against its passing can bring it back to revisit it. But generally, what you're revisiting is the thing that did not pass. But once that's being revisited, you can then have a motion to amend it. And if that motion gets, you know, you vote on the motion to amend like any other motion.
So, it's only a no vote that can bring it back, though?
That's my recollection, yes, sir.
Okay. Can a motion that's 3 to 2 be brought back?
That, I mean-
3A and 2N.
Well, if it's, yeah, if it's passed, yeah.
It carries. So, is there any way to bring back a motion through an amendment or something, or is that just is done?
Oh, well, I mean, no. Anything can be brought before the board, I think. Anything can get put on the agenda. The president can put something on the agenda, or any two supervisors can get together and say, "We want this item placed on the agenda." And so, basically, what you would be doing is say, you know, that, you know, some meeting in the past, we passed this, you know, Resolution X, and I'd like to make- I'd like to now change that Resolution X.
And the reason, as I said at the last meeting, and I think Mike did a great job, we have some issues coming up or some discussion coming up, and Larry will be traveling. So, we made some adjustments on the schedule so that Larry could be here, so that we would have the five individuals. But if we were in fact four individuals, this is why it prompted my question, we had four individuals, and for whatever reason, if it's split two and two, then it doesn't carry, but yet, somebody could bring it back at a later date.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure I interpreted that correctly.
David, you mentioned something there that I guess I don't understand. Two board members can bring something back if they're in agreement. Now, how can they be in an agreement and not talk?
Through a public meeting.
Through a public meeting. You can do it through a public meeting.
Okay.
Or, yeah, or to any public, you know, any public meeting.
Okay. I'm with you now.
Any more questions?
No.
I have something I want to ask you, Tanyan, about the assessments. I don't see in our budget that we're going to do anything about them this year. And is it because of, we need to have this person to come in and adjust it before, right? What's- look what that word did-
Okay, quick summary. GAI consultant Stephen McDonald came in and did a presentation. They have withdrawn their proposal, okay, altogether. So, and if the board wants to leave the assessments as they are, they can do so. If you want to increase the assessments all the way across every rate structure, you can do that as well. But if you want to reevaluate the benefit units that are proposed to us, residential, commercial, vacant lots, all of those items, then a consultant will need to be hired and recommend a recommendation of how we restructure those benefit units.
Okay. That was my question because we could basically, if the board wanted to raise assessments, they could raise them and then hire the consul or the new person to come in and redo the rates.
Yes. And I am going to need some more time with, of course, with Stephen McDonald withdrawing their proposal. I need to- if that is what the board wants, we can put this out for bid. You know, we can, you know, it's up to the board. But if you just want to increase all the rates across the board, that can be done. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm not sure yet. I just think it's something we should know about, and that's why I wanted to bring it to our attentions, because we can do it and then go back if that's what the board so desires. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
Anything else, Dave?
Nope.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.